And welcome to the City of Palm Coast's first virtual council meeting. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 2069 suspending all Florida statutes that require a quorum to be present in person at local government public meetings or require a local government body to meet at a specific public place, the city may conduct meetings of its city council without having a quorum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or videoconferencing as provided by Section 120.54, Section 5B2 Florida statutes. As Mayor, pursuant to the authority granted to me by the city charter, City Council 4, I declared a public emergency on March 15, 2020 in response to the COVID-19. Furthermore, pursuant to these powers and the Governor's Executive Order Number 2069, I suspended all city requirements that require a physical quorum to be present to conduct this meeting and authorized that this meeting be conducted by communications media technology under the city's State of Emergency Proclamation for virtual meetings executed on April 3, 2020. The city manager, pursuant to the authority granted him by the city's initial State of Emergency for COVID-19, has closed City Hall to the public. Therefore, no member of the public will be allowed into the community wing of City Hall during this meeting. Notice that this meeting was going to be held by communication media technology and not at a physical location was posted on the city's website at least five days ago. The notice provided that those members of the public needing reasonable accommodation to participate in the meeting could contact the city clerk for assistance by noon Monday, April 6, 2020. Access to this meeting is being provided via live stream on the city's website at www.palmcoastgov.com and by calling 929-205-6099 and entering the meeting identification number 157899175. Today is April 7, 2020, and it is 6:00 PM. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Are we sure that everyone can hear us? Can everyone here give a thumbs up that they can hear us? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Are you unmuting him?
Yep, here, present. I raise my hand and present.
Thank you.
Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff. Councilmember Howell. I'll get in touch and see if he's available. For now, we'll mark him as absent.
Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number D, which is COVID-19. One, Discussion Updates on COVID-19. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This evening, we have an update from Health Department Administrator Bob Snyder and an update as well from Captain, I believe, Tommy Ascone from the Palm Coast Fire Department.
Okay, hello, everyone. Palm Coast, good evening. Yes, I'm Bob Snyder, Administrator of the Health Department and Mayor Holland and Councilmembers. I really do appreciate this opportunity to give you all an update. So right now, I'll start with some numbers. Total state positive cases, 14,504. Total lab tests, 137,375. That's statewide. And Flagler positive cases, number 35. Flagler lab test results, so results from lab tests that have entered into our surveillance system, number 466, with an 8% positive rate. And so the positives are that number 35, which is that rate is less than the state average of 12%. Positive cases in Palm Coast is 29. And the numbers that I just shared, they are available to the public twice a day, at noon time and at 6 o'clock. So I encourage everyone, please, to go to www floridahealthcovid19.gov. There's just all kinds of information there, line counts by county, and I was especially pleased to see that we now can get some numbers by zip code for every county in the state. So that was something that health officers out in the field were really pushing for. So appreciate Tallahassee doing that. I think one of the big positives that we've seen in the last couple of weeks is that, you know, the most vulnerable population for COVID-19 are persons over the age of 65 with underlying conditions like diabetes, heart-lung disease, and people who are immunocompromised. And so, yeah, we're concerned about our nursing home and long-term care facility patients. And I'm happy to report that we do not have one positive case in any of our long-term care facilities, which we find to be absolutely remarkable. And, you know, we applaud just the wonderful caregivers in our nursing homes and long-term care facilities for doing the right thing. And we have someone on our public health team that monitors them on a daily basis to answer questions, to make sure that guidelines are being followed. So it's all, the process is working. And so we hope that continues. So I guess the biggest public health message, though, is the modeling that we've shared to some groups already today. Modeling from the University of Washington, which does the modeling for Health and Human Services and does the modeling for the U.S. military and several states, including Florida. And so we are on the trajectory of reaching the peak, you know, reaching the apex for a number of cases ascending. And we expected the first week in May, thereabouts, to reach that point. But because of the statewide mitigation and all of the positive efforts at the local and state level, including Palm Coast, the executive orders, the stay-at-home recommendations, closing of the beaches, making allowance for essential activities and services, encouraging all of us to stay home, to stay safe, to stay alive, that those variables have gone into the model. So the model changed. Now we're expecting that apex, the top of the curve, to occur the week of April 21st. So we have to keep things going. We have to keep what we're doing at the top of our minds, top of awareness, you know, and that's the extreme social distancing, no gathering, no gatherings of more than 10 people, wearing our masks or a bandana or a scarf when we're out and about like everyone is doing. Thank you all for doing that. And, of course, good hy- hand hygiene and disinfecting protocols at home and elsewhere. So all these things together are variables that could result in 3,000 less hospitalizations and few hundred less ICU patients. So that's why we have to keep this up. Then, of course, when we reach the apex and we're on our way down from descending the curve, you know, we're still going to have virus out there, we're still going to have patients testing positive, and we'll still be testing, and we still need to be on guard and vigilant just to keep these practices going and heed the advice of everyone and what we've been talking about, both civic county and public health leaders. Right now, the Department of Health, we are very focused on testing. We tested 24 individuals yesterday. We're monitoring persons under investigation. We're monitoring those that are waiting for test results, and we're doing contact tracing in a significant way. This is identifying persons who were close contacts with infected persons within the last 14 days. And, you know, some close contacts have numbered 11, 12 people, some much less. But our public health team and nurses and disease investigators, we contact these individuals, we give them guidance, we ask them to, you know, look for the clinical symptoms that we've heard about, you know, the coughing, the fever, the shortness of breath, and even more clinical symptoms like sore throat, headache, weakness, chills, diarrhea. I mean, these are the symptoms that are accompanying the three big ones. So we monitor them at home, and, of course, if they need to be tested, these close contacts, they will get tested. But the close contact is someone who's had prolonged exposure to a positive case, and the key word there is prolonged, greater than 30 minutes. Examples would be a spouse, a daughter, a son, a grandparent, a caregiver, taking care of someone at home. Those would be good examples of close contacts, not someone that you, you know, wave to or casually pass by, except if you have a situation where someone doesn't cover their mouth or nose when they cough or sneeze, and they might be infected, and, you know, you might be the recipient of that. So that's why we're so much involved in getting out the message about the proper covering of your mouth and nose when you sneeze and imitate Dracula. I want to talk about masks real quickly. I, you know, we heard news over the weekend that 25% to 50% of carriers are asymptomatic. That is something that is now surfacing as this disease, as this virus evolves and as we learn more about it. So thus the importance of wearing a mask, bandana, or scarf if you don't have a mask. This would be for individuals who are out and about, maybe grocery shopping or need to pick up a takeout, a delivery service, or food. Just when you're out and about, just be cognizant of the importance of wearing a mask, especially if you're going to be amongst other individuals. We're wearing masks at the Health Department, at the Emergency Operations Center. Everyone is wearing masks now, and so glad that you are also. There is, plans are being made for a community testing. The county just received 500 testing kits. We are waiting for those kits to be given a thumbs up by the Federal Drug Administration as well as kits that we've just received at the Health Department. The background here, you know, is the national and statewide shortage of testing kits and personal protective equipment, like the gowns, the masks, and the gloves. But we're very lucky in that these arrived, so plans are underway and being made and tweaked to have such an event in the community soon. And the priority individuals would be first responders, healthcare workers, and people over the age of 65 with underlying conditions. I bring this up because testing has been on the minds of many of our residents and citizens in Palm Coast and Flagler County. It's difficult for some counties to do this because they just don't have the supply of test kits. And this is an order that emergency management placed, you know, weeks ago in preparation, thinking ahead. And so they have arrived, and, you know, they will be the ones who will announce, the county will announce per PSA, when the testing would begin here in our community. But plans are underway to do that. So that is a real positive. I want to share a shout-out to Mayor Holland. She brought to our attention last week, and also to Matt, a local laboratory, Diagnostic Solutions, that has much of their headquarters in Palm Coast. Their laboratory is located outside of Atlanta. And I spoke to the CEO, and we've been on the phone a lot, but thanks to Mayor Holland and Matt, we were able, over the weekend, to get this local lab approved by the Department of Health. We may have broken a record for doing such a thing on a Saturday and a Sunday. But the reason why this is significant is because their turnaround time for lab test results, everyone, is less than 24 hours, 24 hours or less. Boy, I'll tell you, that is something compared to most of the commercial labs in the nation where it takes anywhere from five to eight days to get a test result. So it matches the test result outcomes as our public health labs are doing now in getting the results out within 24 hours because the public health labs are really, really focused on the most vulnerable groups in our population. Healthcare workers, we want to keep our healthcare workers safe and healthy so they get tested, especially if they show the symptoms. Then, as I said earlier, those over the age of 65 with underlying conditions. The last comment that I would like to make is that, you know, the real soldiers and heroes in this story, of course, are our healthcare workers, our first responders, whether it's and the healthcare workers in the nursing home, assisted living facilities, public health, our staff, and then, again, all the first responders, law enforcement, EMS, fire rescue, then all those individuals out there in the community that are providing essential services and activities for the rest of us. The person who is, you know, delivering food to you, the person who is working at the grocery store, and, of course, the people in front of you, city government leaders and county government leaders. It's just amazing how well this community has wrapped their arms around each other, shown teamwork, and are just so determined just to fight this thing and to just have that apex time period come sooner rather than later. So we're in this together, and we're going to be successful in reducing positives and reducing deaths in Palm Coast and Flagler County. Thank you, Mayor Holland.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mayor, I'd just like to announce that Jack Howell has joined the meeting.
Is there going to be another update?
Yes, I believe we have Captain Ascone to give us a...
Let me ask a question first and foremost. Does any council member have a question for Bob Snyder?
A quick one.
Yes.
And it's basically not just a question, it's the passion and the caring you put into this, it's, I admire so much, okay? Right after the mayor, I'm impressed. I'm really impressed. And just the only question I had is the drive-in testing, is that any information you could give without jeopardizing any plans, sir?
Yeah, I'm not able to share the details at the moment, other than to say that the plans are being tweaked, and they are just about complete, and that we're going to wait for the county to make an announcement as to the details and as to the time and location. But do expect it soon.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Doug, are there any council members with their hand up for questions? Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, good evening. I would just like to say thank you first and foremost to both the mayor and Bob. I've been monitoring the communications, and everything at the city level has been tremendous, and the way that our mayor advocates is equivalent to the passion that Bob has, even when he's speaking at the county level, and he's been so data-driven, and I love that about Bob, and I always have, that he's always driven by data. So I appreciate that. But there isn't anyone at the helm who I could think I would have more faith in. And thank you very much, Mr. Snyder, for everything you're doing, and of course, Ms. Mayor, thank you for the amount that you advocate and for the sake of our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have actually one question, and it really has to do with the assisted living facilities and the nursing homes. Do you know, you know, this just occurred to me as you were speaking, Bob, the facts of matter is we have about 110 residential assisted living facilities that are operational within our city boundaries. Are you, you know, again, is it because they're not showing symptoms in any of these residential units, including the commercial properties with the assisted living facility? Or have they all been tested, or have they been symptomatic and then have gone to the hospital and come back? My concern is, you know, we've all heard reports and read stories about residents within the homes of these facilities throughout the country, and then they come home, you know, go to the hospital, get checked out, come back, and it infects some of the population within these facilities. Do you know if that's occurring, and if anyone is being tested or has been tested that you can speak to in both the residential and the commercial assisted living facilities in our community?
Mayor, I don't know off the top of my head if we've had any nursing home or long-term care facility individuals that have been tested. I don't, I possibly one or two. And I can look at that tomorrow morning, but there have been no positive cases. And to best answer your question, I'll tell you that a public health nurse is focused and dedicated on staying in contact with all of our nursing homes, long-term care facilities, the small four-to-six-bed, you know, homes for the elderly. I think we have about 31 of those in our community, even those. And so just to make sure that they don't have any questions, to make sure that they're following guidelines as identified by DOH and ACA. And so the guidelines, the most important guideline to follow is the visitation. Visitors are not allowed in these facilities, and that's been going on for two, two and a half, three weeks now, except for life-or-death situations, you know, for compassionate care. Also, there's guidelines, pretty strict guidelines, for all the healthcare workers and caregivers in these settings, nursing homes and long-term care facilities. So we monitor that, and they're expected to monitor that on a daily basis and do temperature checks so many times a day and ask their healthcare workers and staff certain questions that need to be documented. But more importantly, there are very strict guidelines, like a checkout, step one, two, three, four, five, and so on, to make sure that our patients in those facilities are safe, to look for the respiratory symptoms, to look for the clinical symptoms, to check their temperatures on a frequent basis. And as soon as that happens, we are to be notified immediately, immediately, if there are any issues whatsoever, that if anyone is showing signs of clinical symptoms, so that we can avoid an outbreak in a nursing home like other states have experienced. State of Washington comes to mind. So we take this very seriously. The Surgeon General, Dr. Scott Rifke's mayor, he brings this up every single day on our afternoon calls because this is the most vulnerable suspect group in our, in our community, and they're the ones that truly we are most worried about.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howell.
Well, I would just wanted to say, finally, I got on, I had the wrong code number, sir. But that being said, Bob and I are very close. We talk almost on a daily basis.
Is that your comment, Councilmember Howell?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you for joining us. This is our first one, so I appreciate you being patient with our technology and appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will go with Chief Forte?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Chief. Chief is on his way, everyone.
I'd like to go over some accomplishments the city, the county, and the state has made since the formation of the Flagler County Pandemic Planning Team on February 17.
Captain Ascone, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that the public is aware of your title and role. Chief Forte, would you like to introduce Captain Ascone and his role?
Yes, Mayor, I'm just wiping off.
Sorry, sorry, Captain Ascone, I just think it's a...
No worries.
You know, there is a very strict protocol that's happening, and there are very specific roles that through our emergency management team and our fire department that has been allocated for this resource.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Chief Forte from the Palm Coast Fire Department. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Captain Thomascone, who has been working with the Flagler County Emergency Operations Center and their team, and he is our department liaison for emergency management that has been working closely with Jonathan Lord, convey whatever material and information that they need to be carried out citywide and inadvertently, also relaying the information that we need to provide to the county, and he's been working on that since day one. Tom, it's, Captain Ascone has taken on this role. This is definitely within his wheelhouse, being the former EMS officer for the department. This strikes right into his heart of what he does best. He has very, very, very much taken control of the responsibilities in the department. He's been the guiding light for the department, the messaging source for EMS, and the medical response for this COVID pandemic. And I emphatically trust him with the decision-making and I believe he's making the best decisions. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Tom and let him bring you up to speed on where we are and what we've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'd like to go over some accomplishments of the city and the county the state has made since the formation of the Flagler County Pandemic Planning Team on February 17. Mayor Holland has led the charge in proactively mobilizing the city response to the COVID-19. She signed the Declaration of a Local State of Emergency on March 15, canceled all city events programs indefinitely, and launched Palm Coast Virtual City Hall to provide essential city services to residents online, as well as the Virtual Town Hall Series to help residents better understand the city response to COVID-19. On March 22, Mayor Holland signed the Stay Home, Stay Safe Emergency Order to further encourage residents to help flatten the curve. All city facilities, parks, and trails were promptly closed. On April 3, Mayor Holland issued the Shelter and Police Emergency Order, ordering all residents to stay home unless completing essential activities and work. The city purchased three Aeroclave devices to decontaminate and sanitize vehicles, workspaces, countertops, door handles, full rooms, and more. All city staff who have been capable of working from home have been for weeks. Available city staff who could not work from home were reassigned to deep clean city facilities and buildings. Employees in the fire department began monitoring personal temperatures twice a day, developed parameters to send employees for COVID testing. A similar program will be rolled out on all city staff once more thermometers will arrive. While supplies are limited, we have happened to means to go the distance regarding PPE, personnel, and supply. Chief Forte, would you please elaborate on the fire department's efforts thus far?
Part of the challenges that we've had is we have a limited supply, not just in the city or the state, but in the nation. The whole world is looking for the N95 masks. They are in short supply, and we, like everybody else, are looking at depleting stock supply as we're moving forward in responding to calls. One of the things that we've done early is limited response access, and I'm going to let Captain Ascone touch on our response access and our call volume, which has gone up. But when we limited our access response a month ago, we were actually limiting the amount of personal protective equipment that we had to use going on a call, and therefore we were stretching out our supply. You could look at this as a bank account or a savings account that you keep pulling out of, and if you don't replace it, you're going to deplete your entire resource at some point or another, which, two and a half weeks ago, we came up with an alternative measure for the respirators. Four years ago, we had an Ebola outbreak in West Africa, and the department came up with regional partners and came up with a mask and a filter mask for our SCBA's, that's self-contained breathing apparatus, which are connected to our air packs. When we breathe air, we go into a structured fire. The mask provides the air that we need so that... The mask provides the air that we need so that we can survive. We were able to take adapters and convert them to filters. And now we have, all of our frontline officers are the first persons inside of a house suspected of flu-like symptoms or COVID, and they're assessing the patients on a fully encapsulated mask, which is actually covering their eyes, their nose, sinuses, and mouth, which is offering a lot more protection than the N95. By Friday or Wednesday of next week, we should have enough filters for the rest of the crews that would be responding inside of a, of a structure that has a patient with COVID or flu-like symptoms. This does one major component. If we can take 50 employees and put them on a different type of a respirator, that frees up those supplies regionally so that the people that need it in the hospitals or the ambulances that do the transport have access to all of those N95 masks, while we can just take those masks and decontaminate them when we get done with a call. Limiting our exposure, limiting our access to patients is only going to prolong the health of the department so that we're ready for whatever comes down the road next. Just last week, we had two employees that were suspected of possibly having COVID. One employee was out for two shifts, another employee was out for five shifts. And as Bob mentioned earlier, the response time for them to turn around to find out if they was, they actually had the virus, one was nine days. That person was out of work for nine days. We were short-staffed. By doing the implementations that the health department's going to take on, we'll be able to get that employee back to work within 48 hours, a big, big difference. Stretching our supplies and using alternative means of respirators is actually making the regional response a little bit better. Cap?
Thank you. In reviewing our call volume for COVID-19-related calls, they may be dispatched as breathing problems or flu-like symptoms. Comparing 2019 to 2020, in weeks 10 through 14, which started the work, the first week of March in 2019, there were 271 calls for service. In the same period of 2020, the fire department had 396 calls for service, a 68% increase, with only a 2.5% population increase during those years. Crews have been reporting an increase in exasperated symptoms from normal illnesses. Many patients are stating they're just unable to get their overcounter medication that would normally help their system, their symptoms. The CDC has recommended cloth face coverings for the community when out in public. The cloth face masks, along with six feet social distancing, will help slow the spread of COVID-19. These face coverings do not need to be N95s or surgical face masks. Those critical supplies should be left for the first responders and healthcare workers. The projected peak continues to change every day, if not every hour, and at this time, the state of Florida should be at our peak around April 21st. Residents should remain calm, stay home, and together we'll get through this unprecedented time. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions or comments for first responders, either the chief or Captain Esconi at this time? If you do, please raise your hand.
Once again.
Well, you don't have to raise your hand, you can speak, I'm sorry.
I'm here, I can see you.
Yes.
Just to thank you, okay? Great job you guys doing, I've been keeping up with you guys, calling the chief once in a while, and I'm pretty sure that you guys are going to be, I don't know, God's going to put a hand over you and help you, making sure that we all safe with your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Quinio. These, these are definitely unmatched times. We don't know if we'll ever see these again, but, but there's no plan for this. You could only take the information, what you've got, and try different things, and hopefully it works out, but thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've been doing, and it's, it's great to hear that the efforts and protocols that you put in place to limit the amount of men that were, men and women that are going out to calls has paid off. I don't think a lot of people realize that you're out of commission for 10 days essentially while you wait for test results, and you can't burn through our, you know, vital personnel like that. So tremendous job, hats off to you, and thank you for everything that you're doing, and everyone's very proud of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howell?
Well, needless to say, Chief, you and the crew are doing a fantastic job, and as you say, every day, we're writing the book on this. There is no book, and we're making the history. But I do got some good news for you and for other first responders. And that is, I've been working with a local RV club here, and I briefed our city manager this morning, and if you have a first responder that is in need of isolation, they will take a RV and put it in the driveway of that first responder's home so that they can stay isolated, yet they can still see their family. We're working on that. It should be able to be kicked off here within the next day or so.
Can you, can you move? Thank you. Is that all, Doug? Okay. I, I would just like to add, I mean, I think it's important to note the fact that Captain Esconi normally would be in, in charge of hurricanes and wildfires. That is what he is trying to do in response and liaison to the county for their emergency management department. So I want to recognize Chief Forte for recognizing the fact that we have two separate incidents that are going on simultaneously. One was a very elevated drought index, which had to be responded to quite differently than a global pandemic would be, and issuing a response and also making sure that a leadership recognition in that moment was separate, so we were not burning out Captain Esconi for, for being over at our EOC, the county EOC, working with Jonathan Lord, the emergency management director, every single day in response to this. So Chief Forte, I just would, I know we're just updating on COVID-19, but I think it's important to note that you had made the decision to ensure that two separate incidents were able to be recognized, addressed, and a plan was put in place for two separate incidents.
Yes, ma'am. There's, when you run into an event and you don't control, you're out of control, you're going to miss things and miss things quickly. I mentioned earlier that Captain Esconi is well-versed in his wheelhouse with medical. Captain Holmes, who is our fire marshal, is well-versed in the wildfire trade. Both he and I have gone back many years. We're prescribed burn managers. We have had our fair share of holding a fire pot and walking through the woods, if you, if you, if you will. Placing Randy in charge of wildfire is, is natural. He has already started planning, and I, I hope that with the rain that we get, we don't have to do a briefing in the next two weeks on what we need to do, but I can assure you that we've already started a significant amount of pre-planning on what has to happen. And, and those are already the things that are underway that nobody knows about, and we'll be able to provide you with an update in the coming weeks if necessary.
Well, thank you again, and I also want to ask our city manager, who has been on morning calls with the different stakeholders as well, if there's anything you wanted to provide as an update.
I do have an update that I will do at the end of the meeting during my scheduled time, and so just again, my thanks to you, Mayor, and to Chief Forte and Captain Esconi and Holmes for helping us through this disaster.
Please, Councilmember Cuff would like to say something. He's having difficulty trying to find the raise the hand button, so if you could unmute, Councilmember Cuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had one question for the chief.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, we haven't had to reuse any disposable masks or other personal protective equipment, have we?
We're at the point where our N95s, if they're not in contact with any kind of debris or material, that would be considered messy, that they can be used for a 20-hour period. The firefighters are going into these areas for 15 to 20 minutes and tracking their time. By using the new mask and on the SCBA face pieces, they, they literally don't have to change filters for a month, because these filters are hard case, they get wiped down, and they decon the mask. The longer that we can maintain the, the stock and supply, the better off the rest of the responders are in the region that can use the materials. So we, we are monitoring and watching as the folks need a new N95, they'll get replacements, and they're communicating that with their officers. Thanks.
Does that conclude your questions? Okay. Yeah, and just in closing, I would say, there is a reason why we are adamant around people staying at home unless absolutely necessary. The fact of the matter is, we are under not only an executive order from the governor, we have CDC guidelines, we have the Department of Health that is actively responding to this global pandemic, but we have first responders that are responding every day to calls. And if we are putting them in harm's way, if we are jeopardizing their health, if we are not being responsible citizens, we are actually putting our front line, those that go in and save us every single day, in jeopardy. Their health is being put in jeopardy. So when you have two different events going on at one time, and we have our first responders that are down because they have contracted a very serious illness that is killing people across the world, we don't have the luxury of having first responders just sitting there doing nothing. They are actively responding to their everyday calls, and that has not been reduced just because we are facing this state of emergency. So I cannot emphasize enough that please not only do this for yourself, do this for your neighbors, do this for your community, but do this for those, as Bob Snyder indicated, as Chief Forte has indicated, and those that are, are leading this charge, that you are putting the essential workers at risk. And, and those are not only our first responders, those are our healthcare workers that are required to show up every day and do their job. Those are our utility workers, those are our call takers, those are our city employees that are actively continuing to provide services for the residents of City of Palm Coast. So please let this be a moment that we actually are in this together, that we're actually recognizing and acknowledging that city business continues each and every day. It doesn't stop because we're in the middle of a global pandemic. It doesn't stop because we have a high drought index that could cause some potential wildfires from flaring up in our city. Historically, we know that to be true and a reality. And so when we heed these warnings, it's not because we're trying to be difficult, it's not because we're trying to be unsympathetic to our residents, we are doing everything possible to ensure that we get through this together. And so please, understand that this is out of your safety, this is out of our neighbor's safety, this is out of our community's safety, this is out of all essential workers' safety, that we are all in this together. So thank you. Thank you for the update. Please stay on. As we take public comment, we will have our entire city team here that's also going to be able to respond if necessary. So again, thank you so much for your service to our community. Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number E, which is public participation. Thank you for your cooperation and patience as we provide you with our first virtual council meeting. This is a new day. Public participation will work as follows. As in all council meetings, if you speak during item E, you will not be allowed to speak under item I. Item I is reserved for speakers who did not have an opportunity to speak under item E. Prior to calling in with your comments, if you were watching the meeting from your website or through YouTube, please mute those, so when you call in with your comments, there is no interference. If you would like to participate in public comments, call 929-205-6099, and enter the meeting identification number as 157899175. You will need to hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. You will be acknowledged by being unmuted, and you will hear a message that you have been unmuted. Please begin by stating your name clearly for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. When there is 15 seconds left to your three minutes, you will hear a beep. And then at the end of your three minutes, you will hear another beep, and you will be muted at that time. You will not be disconnected from the meeting. All callers will have the opportunity to speak. Please be aware, there may be a short pause as we switch to the next caller. We will now begin. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
No callers.
We will close public comment. I will now entertain a motion to approve agenda item number F2, which is the approval of the minutes for March 3rd, 2020, business meeting, March 10th, 2020, workshop meeting, March 17th, 2020, meeting canceled. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
There's a motion made and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Mayor, I have to actually do a roll call.
Aye.
Say aye, and then Virginia will ask for a roll call.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Vice Mayor Clufus unmuted. Vice Mayor Clufus, can you vote, please?
Aye, and the affirmative.
Thank you.
Mayor Quinio?
Aye.
Councilmember Cuff?
Can you please reply?
Aye.
And Mayor, Councilmember Howell?
Howell says aye.
And Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move to agenda item number G, which is a resolution, agenda item number three. Resolution approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019, as presented by James Moore and Company, P.I.
And honorable mayor, city council, this item was scheduled to be heard at the March 17th, 2020, business meeting. However, that meeting, as you know, was canceled as we worked out logistics to hold a virtual council meeting. The audit has been completed by James Moore and Company for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019, and there is a presentation tonight from James Halloran of James Moore Incorporated. And we also have Helena Alves, our finance director, who will both be available for questions after the presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, this is James Halloran. Can you guys hear me well?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty. I know I met with a couple of you, seems like a long time ago, probably over a month ago, so I'm going to go through this presentation. But first, I'd like to thank Helena, her staff, Shannon, and of course, the city manager, Matt, for all their assistance in getting the audit completed this year. Everything went very smoothly. So as you recall from previous years, the financial statements are, of course, the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to audit those financial statements. With these financial statements, you'll see a number of reports with James Moore and Company's letterhead on them. That's because you're audited under U.S. auditing standards, government auditing standards, you're subject to federal single audit, as well as there's some additional reports required by the Florida Auditor General. So the first item to talk about is the opinion on the financial statements themselves. You guys received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give as independent certified public accountants. So congratulations, you had no audit adjustments, so congratulations as well, Helena and her staff. The second item I want to discuss is internal control and compliance report. So those are required by government auditing standards, and we had no comments that were required under... required under either one of those items. This year, you are again subject to federal single audit. You guys have had years you have not been subject. Unfortunately, we've had some years we've been subject, and those unfortunate is because they're primarily related to FEMA funds. So, you had about $5.5 million total federal awards for the year, of which 4.2 was related to FEMA. In testing the FEMA project, we had no items that were required to be reported, so we had no material instances of noncompliance, and no material weaknesses in internal control. As I mentioned before, there's a couple of items required by the Florida Auditor General. The first one is the management letter, and that report has us go through a number of required items from the Auditor General site, and we had no items that were required to be reported. It looks at things such as investment statutes, as well as financial condition assessment, and any other recommendations we would have, and follow-up from previous recommendations. And we had no comments in that report. The investment examination, as I mentioned, also, we compare the city's investment statutes with the State of Florida's investment statutes, and compare those two, and compliance with that, to ensure it's in compliance with the Florida statutes for investments. And we had no comments related to that. New for this year, the Auditor General started requiring an affidavit on impact fees. Previously, you only were required to include this affidavit, and this is not anything that James Moore signs, this is signed by your Finance Director and City Manager. And what the new requirement is, is both they're testing to, that the impact fees have been assessed appropriately, and then also spent appropriately. Because we all know there's a restricted funds when they come in, whether it's for the parks, whether it's for water, whether it's for sewer impact fees, all those have restrictions on them, and they can't be spent on items that they're not assessed for. So, that was a new requirement the Auditor General had for this year. I always get asked about financial health. So, as I mentioned, we do a financial condition assessment, which we use a methodology and tool provided by the Florida Auditor General. And in looking at your overall financial condition this year, it is a favorable financial condition. We looked at approximately 25 financial indicators. Of those 25, you had about 18 favorable of those 25 indicators. Also, we look at your fund balance policy, and you're either at your fund balance policy or above your fund balance policy limit on any funds that needed to be in compliance with that policy. So, a little bit of numbers for this year, because wouldn't it be CPA if I didn't talk about numbers a little bit? Your general fund, that's the fund you have the most discretion over. Most of your other funds, especially your governmental funds, have some type of external restriction. Could be an impact fee that has a restriction, could be debt service. So, this is where you have the funds with the most unrestricted resources. Your general fund increased by approximately $2.5 million. Good chunk of that was investment earnings, but that was a lot of appreciation. And we all know what the market's done in the past month or two, so my guess is most of that appreciation is gone at this point. You also, each year, all your management teams look for areas for savings. So, there were some savings on the administrative side of about $330,000. Parks and Rec had some maintenance savings, about $560,000, and Streets, about $630,000, all for a total of about $1.5 million. Your capital projects fund is primarily funded, one through transfers and also with some state revenue monies. So, with those two, that'll fluctuate each year, how it goes up and down, depending on the timing of the projects. So, when the projects are expended and completed, that's when those monies come off. You have some transfers in each year for those projects as well. Utility fund, when we look at utility fund, one thing to look at is the unrestricted portion of net position, which is the equity. You have restricted parts of it, and also what's invested back in the capital asset, the infrastructure of the water and sewer plant. So, if you look at just the amount that's left over, there's about a $1.5 million increase, and that was anticipated based off the annual rate increases and just an overall increase in customers per the year. Property taxes overall were up about $2.3 million for the city. Capital grants and contributions increased as well. You had increased impact fees from construction activity and also some donated land. Operating grants decreased, a little bit less in the FEMA funds this year than in prior years. Overall, you saw a decrease in your expenses for the city, about $2.3 million, and that correlates directly with the operating grant for FEMA, was down about $2.3 million. So, you have Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund, that's your only fund that has a deficit at this point. And that one, over time, that deficit will be eliminated as that special assessment is collected, or as properties are sold. At that time, the full special assessment is received by the city. That fund improved this year by about $310,000. Related, in the next comment, about advances to other fund, that loan from the utility fund over to Old Kings Road is at $4.5 million, originally was at $4.9. So, each year, as funds are available, it repays back the utility fund. And just so you guys know that, the utility fund is currently receiving 5% of interest on that loan, so better than they could get actually in the open market right now. Long-term debt, so the good parts about long-term debt, there was no new debt for this year, all there was was pay down of your existing debt. As you see the next note there, the subsequent event, you did issue some new stormwater notes subsequent to year end, so subsequent to September 30, for stormwater, about $5.3 million. Little bit on your retirement plans. Majority of your employees, of course, in a defined contribution plan. You do have the Volunteer Fire Fighters Pension Plan, that's funded strictly through insurance premium taxes that are paid by each homeowner on their insurance policies, so there's no city contributions into that plan. Currently has a net pension asset at September 30, probably not quite $1.6 million right now with investments, but still would probably be close to even, or maybe have a still positive net pension asset. You do have 10 employees who are left on the Florida retirement system. When the city was first incorporated, you allowed anyone who was working for Flagler County to come over, work for the city, and they could stay in the Florida retirement system. With that, you're required to record the net pension liability related to that, which is approximately $3.1 million that gets recorded on your government-wide financial statements. The defined contribution plan you have is for all your other employees. You have zero net pension liability, because once you put the funds in for that payroll period for those employees, and you put the city portion in, your responsibility is done at that point for any future funding of that plan. I do mention GASB-84, it's a governmental accounting standard that came out. We'll be looking at that with Helena to just look at it, because there's some situations that could make that Pension Trust Fund for the defined contribution plan potentially have to come and be included in the CAFR. There's some new guidance coming out, it's in draft form right now, that's with GASB. Hopefully, they'll eliminate that requirement, but I'll keep Helena abreast on that in the next couple of months. So, I always get asked for your general fund, because that's the main fund, that you have the ability to use some of those at your discretion. So, your general fund at the end of the year had about $10.3 million of unassigned fund balance. So, that's really what's available for the City Council to spend. And you'll see three different percentages there. So, we compare that to, what is it as a percentage of your current year expenditures and your current year expenditures in transfers? So, about 31% of just expenditures, 28%. So, you're right about a little bit more than three months, about three and a half months. And if you look at it, more importantly, for you guys, is how does that compare to your 2020 budget? So, you're right about 24%. And that includes the amounts for the University of North Florida as well. Your fund balance policy is to be between 10 and 20% of the following year's budget expenditures. So, considering the uncertainty we have ahead of us, it's good that you're within your fund balance policy, and even that you're slightly above it, will give you some flexibility, hopefully. What we do know is the state's already talked about revenue estimates on state shared revenues, whether it's sales tax, gas tax, communication service tax, you name it, it's going to be down, because there's less sales tax coming into the state, and that's the primary funding mechanism. So, Helena, she's putting together a budget, she probably will get those numbers, my guess is from what I've been hearing, is later than normal, which is usually later than they say, which is usually June, so maybe late June, maybe even early July, before we get some estimates from the state of what they think those amounts will be. And that is all I have, so I will take any questions you guys may have.
Counsel, any questions or comments at this time? Please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized. Doug, are there any?
Mr. Clufus?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to say, thank you very much for meeting with me when we did. I guess, I'm not certain if I was the last one we met with, but it was pretty recent, because we were actually talking about the potential financial health of the city during a crisis like the one we're experiencing right now. We also talked about hurricane planning and such, but thank you very much for all the work that you do, and thank you for nearly a great audit this year.
I appreciate it. I'll pass that on to my team.
Doug, any others? I have two questions. Going back to the net pension liability, if you can go back to that slide, if we're able to do that.
Yeah.
The 10 employees, is that through the state retirement plan?
Yeah, that's through the FRS system, correct.
So, are those 10 employees that 3.1 million liability? How is that factored in annually? Meaning, that's not going to all come out at once? Are you saying those are outstanding employees?
No, no. And what'll happen is, you're paying the contribution set by the state, and most of those, I think they're all right now fire, so that percentage that you're paying is in the 20%, I think it's close to 25%, you're paying of their wages into the FRS system. Once you have zero employees, that liability will go to zero. Because how it's calculated is the contribution that the City of Palm Coast puts into the state retirement system compared to all contributions into the state retirement system for the year.
So, how does that work different from the pension for the city's pension system that was set up compared to Governor Scott orders a few years back, where also the employees required to do the 3% match with the local municipality?
That's only if you're in the state retirement system, so only if that city or county, most counties are in FRS. So, for those employees, they had to start contributing that 3%.
So, I mean, I think, Counsel, this is important to note, frankly. The fact of the matter is, the city has a pension plan that is very robust, that I think is very favorable to our employees. However, those that have come over from the state retirement plan, that is a liability that we own. And so, it's important to remember that when we're, you know, hiring, I would think. Matt, correct? Do you take that into account, that kind of liability that we take on?
That was a one-time offer when people migrated over, when the city was incorporated.
Okay.
So, everyone now is on the defined contribution plan. We will not be adding FRS employees, I'm aware of, to the City of Palm Coast.
Thank you.
Yeah, last year, Mayor, just so you have a comparison, I believe it was 14 employees last year, and it's down to 10. So, as employees retire, you'll see that liability drop, and eventually go to zero when you have no one left in the FRS system.
Thank you. And the second thing is, where are you getting the figures as far as the less sales tax through the state? I know in leadership, they've gotten some recent projections that show a higher estimate than what was originally thought of when COVID-19 hit the state. I joke that I think it's probably attributed towards toilet paper supplies and purchases that...
Well, if you just look at tourism for the state, and what I'm relating it back to, is I know what we went through after September 11.
Okay.
And with how the tourism was, you know, and they weren't even shut down as much as they are now.
Okay.
And I remember those years auditing, and seeing the drops in the state shared revenues, the drops in the sales tax money, and those items. So, that's where I'm getting that from.
I would be curious to see what actually pans out compared to, again, looking at our supply and demand of just goods and services that it seems to be that our residents are buying in droves, that would normally not be a consumer-driven purchase, how that actually equals out to the loss of revenue elsewhere.
Yeah. Well, the big one, if you think about it, that's pretty obvious, is gas tax. Because gas tax is driven off, you know, gallons, not even what the gas price is. And we all know everyone with staying at home is driving less, you're going to have less gas tax revenues coming in.
So, I mean, I guess that's a question for Helena, then, as far as the projections for our fuel tax collection coupled with how we have our road maintenance plan and utilization of those dollars. Are you projecting that we would shore those up during the budget year, or make those decisions based on less road miles maintained, or doing away with certain projects?
Good evening, Mayor. Helena Als, Financial Services Director. We actually started conversations today, Mr. Morton, myself, and Carl, regarding our Streets Improvement Fund and the possibility of loss of revenue due to gas tax. Now, at this point, we're waiting to see what happens with the economy before we make any changes, but we'll definitely be having those conversations with Counsel through budget, yes.
So, this is actually pretty helpful, frankly. So, we go through our goals and objectives and strategic action plan even throughout this. I think it's important to denote priorities may change, and we have to make some tough decisions, that this will impact us locally, financially. So, I appreciate the auditor's report. You know, again, I'm also appreciative of our very fiscally conservative Budget Finance Officer, who always reminds us that we need to be mindful of every single cent that is spent and allocated. So, thank you to both of you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will now open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G3? Again, the same rules apply, as I previously stated. We will now begin. Please hit *9, and you will be unmuted. State your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comments, and I will take it back to this Counsel for further discussion or a motion.
I'll make that motion if anybody has any, doesn't have any other comments.
So, is there a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote?
Second. I'll second. Jack Howell.
And seconded, Virginia?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number G4, which is a resolution approving the auditor selection procedure for selection of an external auditing firm.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This item was heard by the City Council at the March 10, 2020, workshop. At that point, there were no changes to the suggested item. In accordance with Florida Statute 21839, the city is required to adopt and follow approved auditor selection procedures when selecting an external auditing firm to perform the annual financial audits of the city. Attached to this is the auditor selection procedure document that was prepared to meet those statutory requirements. In summary, the City Council serves as the Audit Selection Committee, and upon completion of the selection process, you will direct by this resolution, the City Manager, myself, to go ahead and negotiate and prepare a contract with the highest-ranked firm for the selection of an auditor. If we're unable, the caveat on this ordinance is if we're unable to reach agreement, I'm then thereby directed to negotiate with the second highest-ranked firm, and so on until an agreement can be reached. Again, this is a resolution approving our advertisement and beginning the procedures to advertise for an auditing firm for the city.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions or comments on this Agenda Item? Okay, seeing none, I will open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G4? Again, we will now begin. Please hit *9, you will be unmuted. State your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. Seeing no public comment at this time, I will take it back to council and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Great. Moved and seconded, Virginia, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Brancino?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Affirmative.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we are having, um, some, uh, residents that are replying on our social media that they are having difficulty of trying to get in, so, um, we're working on that as best we can.
We're not listening to, I mean, you know, if I could give the rules again?
They're, they're trying. No, they're trying to, trying to call in is what I'm just saying.
So, if we're having a num- a problem with the call-in number that's different, if they're replying on social media?
They're, they're trying to get in having difficulty and the only way to get through is that they can't get through, so they're trying to reach us by social media. But there is an IT technical support line that they can call so that they can get assistance and that number is listed on the notice is 386-986-2391.
Agenda item number G5 is a resolution approving a sublease agreement with Flagler County for the Lehigh Trail restrooms and parking area. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Uh, I would like to ask Carl Cootie, uh, to be recognized to present this item.
It's good evening, this is Carl Cootie, Director of Stonewall Engineering Department. This particular item is associated with the improvements at the Lehigh Trailhead Belter Parkway. This is an ongoing project. Our city was awarded a grant with DOT for the design phase for a trailhead at that location. The city owns, um, that area where the FPL has an overhead lines placed and there are some restrictions on what the city can construct within the, that area of property. Um, part of which, um, requires that the restroom structure be placed outside the easement area. So we, uh, worked in conjunction with the state who owns the lands adjacent to the property, whi- which is really the Lehigh Trail path, and the county who is the land managers for that area. Um, we drafted up, uh, legal sketch and description for that area of property that the city was looking to place the restroom facility in. Uh, an agreement, sublease agreement was drafted by the state, was, um, issued to the city and the county. The county has already gone forward and executed the sublease agreement and it is here for council for our execution, so we can then proceed and forward it to the state to move forward and, uh, gain approval.
So Carl, I, I wanna thank you, um, for, uh, taking the lead on this as well as, um, Jose. Uh, this is a very critical, um, project for our city. As many of you may know, um, we now have limited parking. It's really a, a dirt area, uh, that is adjacent to a very high-traffic-driven residential area that is also adjacent to our fire station as well as our tennis center that is heavily utilized. We currently have residents that are running across Belter, um, it, utilizing Lehigh Trailhead, whether it be with strollers or bicycles or with their pets. Um, we had presented this to the interim secretary, uh, FDOT Secretary, District Five. Uh, they understood the serious nature and safety concern we have as a city and, um, I believe we not only have to continue to push this as a top priority for funding, um, but it is essential that we get adequate parking, adequate restrooms for a highly utilized, um, amenity, uh, for our residents. So, uh, again, I know you have been working on this. Um, I know that, um, uh, Councilmember Cuff, as our representative for the TPO, is also, um, very aware of this situation. So, um, I am in complete agreement, uh, that we need to, uh, advance this project, hopefully secure funding from FDOT, uh, to adequately resolve this issue as a safety measure for our city. So thank you very much. Counsel, are there any questions or comments on this particular agenda item?
I just have a question, Carl. How many parks, parking spaces are we talking about here?
Oh, um, I'm, I'm doing this from memory. I wanna say it was like 70 or so, 50 to 70 in that range. There's, there's a ability in the future plan to expand it further east, but the initial phase is right around that amount.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Again, any member of the public wishes to speak on this agenda item, um, please call in, uh, to 929-205-6099 and enter the meeting identification number as 157-899-175. When you hit star nine, you will be unmuted. State your name for the record and your three minutes will begin. Seeing no one from the public making public comment, I will close this item and ask for a, a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and approved, roll call, Virginia, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Brancino?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Affirmative.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number G6 is a resolution approving amendment one to the license agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for license plate readers and live traffic cameras.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Uh, the city did enter into an agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for a license agreement for license plate readers on October 11th, 2018. In that initial agreement, there was two locations approved for license plate readers. One was Palm Coast Parkway and the US 95 interchanges, both east and westbound. The second was SR 100 and US 95 interchanges, both east and westbound. This agreement is seeking to essentially accomplish two things. One, to expand the license plate reader locations to a total of now six, um, to, uh, seven, excuse me, so, uh, five additional locations. And additionally, the city presently monitors by video, um, uh, about 40 intersections within the city and the sheriff is requesting access to those video camera feeds for the purposes of monitoring, uh, traffic intersections for crashes and other traffic problems, um, and also as a, a crime fighting tool. Uh, we provide those feeds currently 24/7. The city does not record, um, any of these traffic feeds, however, the sheriff is asking to do that through those live traffic cameras. Uh, through this agreement, Flagler County Sheriff's Department is responsible for the costs and maintenance of the equipment and also for the retention and recording, um, first date statute of the video feeds that he would be recording.
Thank you so much for your, um, update on this and presentation. Counsel, do we have any questions on agenda item number G6? Please ask at this time.
Just a comment, uh, this LPRs, the license plate readers, uh, once they, once we're able to record them, they're not just a civilly, but also criminal, a weapon for us to fight crime. Not that we have a lot of crime in, uh, Palm Coast, but the little we have, we wanna do away with. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions or comments at this time?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, uh, can you hear me? Yep, okay, excellent. Is there, uh, any provisions for what we're going to be doing with, as far as public records requests and who those would be routed through? I would just hate to see, um, the city get overwhelmed with the influx of, uh, PRRs and have to sacrifice some of our resources 'cause it gets too heavy. Do we have anything in place for that?
Yeah, so the response and providing of all information for all public records requests and access requests will be coordinated, will be actually a re- a signed responsibility, excuse me, of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so we'll be out of, out of that process then?
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Councilmember Cuff?
Councilmember Cuff?
Um, did, did I understand this item to say that if we enter into this agreement with the sheriff, we have to agree not to record with any of these feeds? I mean, I know we don't do it now, but what's the basis for that, um, limitation on what we can use our traffic cameras for?
Uh, that, that, I would ask, um, Bill Reichman to answer. As my understanding, there is a preclusion preempting us to, in fact, record that information. Again, to your point, not that we would want to, we don't have the bandwidth at this point or the storage to record that information.
Mr. Reichman?
Tyler Gibson is also available.
Good evening, Mayor, this is Bill Reichman. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
You can respond to Councilmember Cuff's question.
The, uh, Mr. Cuff, Councilmember Cuff, can you repeat your question, please? I was having a hard time, um, hearing it.
Yes, um, can you hear me now, Mr. Reichman?
I can't, I can't, sir.
Uh, okay. Uh, my question was, my understanding of this agenda item is by entering into this agreement with the sheriff, we have to agree that we do not have the right to make recordings from these cameras. Um, and we don't do that now and I certainly don't see why we'd wanna be doing it on a 24/7 basis, but I'm not sure what the legal basis is for giving up our right to say, you know, record a particular intersection if we wanna be able to study the, uh, the traffic flow through that as part of an analysis for street improvements or something like that.
I'm not a, Councilmember Cuff, I'm not aware of a legal reason that would preclude us from, from, um, having the right to use our own cameras, uh, for recording of some purposes. I'm not sure why the sheriff, uh, would want, uh, that provision in this contract to, to limit the, the city's rights. Um, I would, I would, um, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to dodge, but I, I do not know the specific answer why this prohibition is contained in this contract.
So, um...
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Morton, do you wanna, uh, respond?
Just apparently, we have some confusion. It's stated in the sixth whereas clause, which is what Councilmember Cuff is referring to, that the city must forfeit its right to record live traffic feed and grant such permission to the FCSO. It appears that we have to resolve a question now that I thought was resolved. Um, so I would ask, uh, not to take action on this tonight and we'll have to resolve that issue.
Would you like it tabled?
I, yeah. I would suggest tabling it till we can resolve that question before we enter into a provision that I was, uh, under the assumption that that was a requirement, uh, that may or may not be now.
Okay. Um, before I ask for a motion, I'm going to open up to the public unless there's other questions or comments by the council before...
Uh, Mayor, they're all requesting to speak.
They're all requesting? So, do you know who was first?
Um, I think Vice Mayor Clufus.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Yep, and most of my, uh, question or comment had been answered by subsequent, uh, asks, but I was also gonna say, does, does that preclude us from streaming the, uh, video into systems? And I wasn't the impression that, um, it was all gonna be public records, so I thought it was just, is it possibly duplication of video feeds? But I would also not like to be precluded from the usage of our cameras. I just wanted to, uh, thank Bob for bringing that up.
Uh, Councilmember Howell?
Councilmember Howell?
Yeah, uh, I just, one area that I'm kinda concerned about is that we have had complaints, or at least I've received complaints over the last couple of months of trucks coming southbound on I-95, getting onto Matanza's Parkway and then going down to Belter. I mean, they're deliberately trying to miss the scales. And, uh, I'm hoping that we're going to have some surveillance so that the sheriff can take the appropriate law enforcement, uh, action.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, Councilmember Cuff? Bob, I believe you're unmuted. If you'd like to make a comment?
Okay. Uh, wasn't intentional, but I mean, my comment was, I'd like an answer to the question. I'm not necessarily opposed to the item the way it's presented, but, um...
No, this is, this is very helpful. I, I think, uh, we have clear direction that we will, um, request tabling, uh, to get an answer for you, uh, again. Um, under normal circumstances, I think we would have...
Could answer it right away, yes. Sorry, apologize.
Uh, the ability to respond, but due to this, I think, uh, it's, it's wise for us to table to get clarification. I will open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number G6? Please do so at this time. Seeing no public comment, we'll take it back to this council. I will entertain a motion. Do you wanna table it to a time certain? If, if it is a time certain, then no discussion after that is required, I will call the question. Do you want a time certain for the next meeting or do you just...
The next meeting would be great. I know we can have a result by then. Thank you, Mayor.
So can I please have a motion for a time certain, um, by the next council business meeting?
Yes, the next council business meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Brancino?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Cuff?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Howell?
Affirmative.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Um, agenda item number H is the consent agenda, agenda item number seven and eight. If any member of the public wished to make public comment on agenda item number seven or eight, please do so at this time. Seeing no public comment, I'll take it back to this council and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Affirmative.
Brancino?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. I think we had an order, um, I, I was going to ask Councilmember Brancino to go first since he's here. Do you have anything to state?
Yes, uh, actually, I do and, uh, basically, uh, amongst all of us, I'm pretty sure that we feel the same way. I wanna thank, uh, all the healthcare workers, the first responders, people from this city like, uh, utilities department, public works, parks, recreation, the call-takers, everybody. Uh, I would like to thank you for the job you're doing. And, um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm very proud of you, up to now. I may won't speak with you tomorrow, but up to today, you're doing a very, very good job. Matthew, uh, thank you for keeping me informed of everything, even though you're my neighbor, you don't stop. You just fly through. Um, just a point, my son is a nurse right here in Advent Health. And as much as I fear when he goes to grand zero per se every day, uh, I'm the proudest dad that could exist by seeing him go to work. So, when someone says that we are treating him or her like kids because we closed our parks and trails, I get worried. But let me say this, this fires, this virus will not disappear like a cheap magic trick. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you to your son. Um, I will, uh, ask, uh, Councilmember Howell, uh, for comments.
Uh, well, I'm, uh, got nothing to say. I'm very proud of everybody in the city for, you know, hanging in there and doing what they do best. Uh, you're doing a fantastic job, uh, staying on top of this and, uh, hey, as long as we work together as a team, we're gonna beat this boogeyman.
Yes, thank you so much, and please stay safe. Colonel Howell, we appreciate your leadership.
Yeah, I'm in the highest risk category. Yeah, I got it.
Yep. Yes, you do, sir. And thank you. Thank you for actually setting the standard.
But I'm like the cockroach, and I will survive.
Well, I appreciate you setting the standard, frankly, and ensuring that you are staying at home and staying safe. So, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Cuff?
I would repeat what Councilmembers Howell and Branquino have said. I do thank the citizens as well as our workers for observing the social distancing, mask wearing, hand washing, and urge anybody who's listening to this to please keep doing that. It's encouraging that the peak may come earlier than we had hoped, but as several other people have said, this isn't going to disappear magically overnight. We need to keep up what we're doing, and if we do, we'll all be better off sooner than later. So, thank you to everybody that's working hard on this, and please stay healthy and stay safe.
Well said. Thank you. Vice Mayor Clupus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say you've had tremendous leadership throughout this pandemic, and everyone is grateful for that. I'd also like to echo the comments that my colleagues had made. I would just like to thank everyone who's appreciating the seriousness of the situation and staying at home and observing, you know, proper social distancing and eliminating any trips that they are not absolutely critical, and especially those in the older demographic who are more susceptible. I'm thankful for a lot of the outreach that I have been able to facilitate so that even I can go pick something up for someone and bring it to them instead of them venturing out. So, everything that we can do as individuals, it all adds up, because we all talk about being bigger than ourselves and thinking bigger than ourselves, and this is the chance and opportunity that we have to live that life. So, thank you for everyone and all the first responders that continue to put their lives on the line, and thank you to all the essential workers who are out there servicing at the grocery stores and to-go restaurants. Thank you for staying strong. We will get through this together.
Thank you so much also for your leadership and setting the example of young professionals. I know, working from home, you have the availability to do that, but also ensuring that social distancing and leading that effort. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I would just add to the comments already made. I am very, very proud of this city, but I'm very, very proud of the council I serve with, the leadership and our city manager, and every staff member that has been extraordinary during unprecedented moments in our community. They have continued to provide services to our residents. They have done it in a safe manner. They have all come together as a team, and they've all been encouraging throughout this process. And we are not there yet. You know, we've got a ways to go, and we need to be mindful. So, when the city asks you to stay home, again, we're doing it for your safety. When we're saying stay off of our parks and trails, we're doing it because this is a deadly disease that we know the only way we can avoid the spreading of this is to stay away from each other as much as possible. I know these times are trying, and I know our residents are fearful, and we're all mindful of what we're going through. So, stay healthy mentally, too. We need to make sure that we're talking to each other. We need to make sure we're picking up the phone instead of texting and having a conversation, but staying safe in your own home. And so, I am encouraged by what I've seen, very, very grateful for our employees, very grateful for our first responders, very grateful for our healthcare workers, who frankly, I don't know how they're doing what they're doing every day. It's, it's just unbelievable. And so, we've got great leadership in the county with Jonathan Lord in emergency management. We have great leadership in our health department, and our media, I have to say, they have helped in extraordinary ways getting accurate, up-to-date information out and have been great partners. And, you know, we're very, very lucky in our community to have that kind of relationship, stakeholder involvement, and partnership. Advent Health will be answering some of our calls tomorrow with our town hall, and our communications team. I know, Matt, you're going to give an update, but working around the clock to ensure that our residents are kept informed. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you again to our council that has heeded the warnings and has set the example and, you know, really made sure that they are reaching out to the residents as well. So, I appreciate it, trying times, but we will get through it together. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Mayor, this is Bill Reichman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor, this is Bill Reichman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have nothing to report other than a question. Wasn't sure whether we covered Agenda Item I, the second public participation on the agenda?
No, but I will get back to that after your comments.
Okay, nothing further.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you. You, too, Mayor. Appreciate it.
We will go back and open it up to Agenda Item Number I, which is the second public participation. Since we've had no public participation at the beginning of the meeting, we will ask for public participation at the end of the meeting. Star nine is to unmute, and your name for the record is required, and your three minutes will begin. Seeing no public participation, I will now take it to discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda. Agenda Item Number Nine, which is reporting of emergency and sole source purchases for February 2020 and March 2020 purchases. Mr. Morton, you're up.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Listed are the sole source purchases, both for February and March. In order, I won't read each one. They consist of mainly emergency and sole source purchases for our water plant, our wastewater utility, for fleet management, and water distribution. There are emergency purchases that are online. Again, we purchased the autoclave sterilizers. That was an emergency purchase for dealing with this COVID-19, and we had some emergency repair services. We issued two emergency contracts, one to GAI, or done under the emergency service provisions for sole source, excuse me, GAI consultants for Old Kings Road widening, and another sole source for Halifax Old Kings. As required by city charter, I'm just listing these to bring attention to the fact that we have, in fact, completed sole source and emergency purchases in the months of February and March 2020.
Thank you so much. Counselor?
Let's not forget to say thanks for the IT job. You're doing a very, very good job. Thank you, too.
Counsel, any comments on Agenda Item Number Nine? Doug, do you see any hands?
I'm out.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number L10 is a resolution approving contracts, work orders, and agreements for the Old Kings widening Phase One project.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and I do have Carl Cody here again to present and talk us through this item.
Yes, good evening. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. The Old Kings Road item was one that was brought to council workshop and was presented on March 10. There are several items that were in here resulting with the widening of the first phase of that project. It had the construction contract. It had the construction engineering services. It had some work orders with the primary consultant, DRMP, as well as with Danella, who will be working on some fiber associated with the project with existing customers, and a contingency with the project as well. So, in addition with FPL, because there are some upfront costs to put in some power poles associated with getting street lighting in that first phase. So, multitude of items. It was presented during the workshop. There have been no changes since then.
So, going back to FPNL, do we have assurances that due to the timing of this project, we will be coordinating and they will be installing the lights?
Yes, they, they had to do a little bit of design work with the specialized power poles, or inline poles with the existing power, but they are definitely coordinating, and there should not be an issue with working with our contractor and the timing, because they will go in towards the end of the project. The contractor will lay the conduit as part of his work during the contract. So, there shouldn't be any hiccups on that project. It should run smoothly.
I would just also state, I know that Vice Mayor Clupus speaks about that one dig as far as everything utility-driven during that moment. Are we coordinating to ensure all installations will be done during that moment?
Yes, there's a lot of utility pre-work. I think every utility company in that quarter is in conflict with the improvement project. So, all the utility companies, the contractor and the city have been reaching out to all of them and working through their work schedule to get out of the way. That had all been coordinated well during the design phase. And as we move forward with the design, we are laying new fiber conduit to run a new mainline through that area as well. So, we're looking forward to getting it all in while the construction is happening, correct?
Thank you. Counselor, are there any comments on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, thank you very much for the update, Carl. Agenda Item Number L11 is a resolution approving a change order with Shenline LLC for structure as part of the trenches pipe rehabilitation services project.
Again, thank you, Mayor, and I would ask Carl to bring us up to date on the Shenline contract.
This is another item associated with the presentation that was done at the March 10 workshop. We had numerous pipes that were lining throughout the city, six of them, in fact, three different contractors. This one in particular was the one on East Hampton. There was a, this one is a sleeve that gets inserted inside the existing pipe. The sleeve that was in the contract was too large for the existing pipes to fit in. We did identify two other locations for that material to be utilized. So, this change order would purchase a smaller lining for the pipe that we wanted to line on East Hampton, and then these other, the material that's already been on-site will get transferred to two other projects.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this particular agenda item? None. I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Carl, for the update. Agenda Item Number 1112 is a resolution approving a master price agreement with Harris Culvert Incorporated for the purchase of Culvert Pipes.
Thank you, Mayor, one last time. Carl Cody, Stormwater Engineering Manager, to remind us again of the order.
Yes, this, again, was discussed at the workshop. We have a price agreement for pipe materials that has been, that had expired. The city went back out to bid to seek quotes for a price agreement for various pipe materials and pipe sizes. This vendor, who was the previous low bidder, again, was the low bidder this go-around. This is a contract for replacing of numerous and various pipes throughout the city, part of in-house work that typically the city crews do.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Again, this is Agenda Item Number 1112. Seeing none. I appreciate the update. Thank you so much, Carl. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
You're up.
Thank you. Doug, I have a slide presentation. I'll just go ahead and start. I just wanted to take an opportunity to address the council and bring you up to speed of where we've been at. Since early February, we have been preparing our response to COVID-19. We have been continuously calibrating our response as information changes, and that has been literally day to day and hour by hour. We meet daily as a staff team in our COVID-19-focused emergency operations center. As you all know, this has not been a nine-to-five challenge, and I assure you, there has not been a nine-to-five response. I am proud of the work under the leadership of our mayor and the consistent hard work of our department heads across the city. As Bob Snyder mentioned, the mayor brought together a team to work through the weekend to put in place testing for our community. This was something that for our community will unequivocally help reduce the spread and save people's lives. Mayor, I thank you, and this is just one example of the extraordinary, tireless leadership that you have provided to us here at the city. We have been adapting rapidly and finding meaningful ways to create public value, as is expected by you, our council, and our residents, and to continue to serve our residents. I'm proud to say our level of service remains strong across all of our departments. This includes park and rec, utilities, stormwater, finance, IT, community development, communications, customer service, and others. Together, I am sure we will find a path forward. I do want to note, we do expect all of our physical facilities and our buildings to remain closed through April. Doug, if you can start the slideshow. I just lost visibility. What I wanted to highlight tonight, to go back to the first slide, is that your virtual city hall, your city is working for you. Palm Coast Connect and your virtual city hall, we have seen an extraordinary number of cases and calls come through our call center. Our call center folks have been working tirelessly. The edge of that graphic, I think, is cut off, but we are seeing significant call volumes increase every day. These have been enabled to be handled remotely through our integration of Pure Cloud Phone with our Palm Coast Connect system. It has worked seamlessly. It has worked since the beginning. This council's investment into Palm Coast Connect is paying dividends for us every day. This is a, what we call our Q wrap-up summary. This is what we're using on a daily basis. This is information we never had access to before. This is our community. This is our residents telling us what their concerns are, what their questions are, and how we can be of assistance to them. You'll notice that these are all cases related to the COVID-19 response. We get a lot of questions regarding generalized information, a lot of questions around, of course, utilities, garbage and recycling, and that health and sanitation function. And so, again, we are able every day to track and calibrate a data-driven response towards responding to our residents and making sure we're appropriating the resources to the right areas. This is absolutely fascinating to me, and I hope you will find this just as interesting. Up in the upper left, where it says COVID-19 cases by all subtype, again, we're able to see what is concerning our residents, whether it be EMS and fire questions. Then again, we're able and we know to prioritize information and resources towards either solving problems or answering questions. On the right side, since this event began approximately two weeks ago, we have had 3.4,000 and growing residents register through our Palm Coast Connect platform. These are folks that now are engaged, that can receive information and ask questions and become, you know, connected to our city on a daily basis. One of the great things about this system is we are using it as our single source of truth. It is a one place you can go to get consistent, timely, accurate, and up-to-date information on the city's response to this pandemic, information that is shared across our stakeholders, and find answers to questions you may have that are helping you navigate this crisis. It's also a place to find connection to our city. We have, through our Parks and Rec Department, virtual town hall programming that has come online. It has just, you know, emerged, and the fantastic thing is what these documents are showing, what these graphs are showing, is people are using the system, they're engaging with us through the system, and it is absolutely working and is being successful. This was staggering to us. We've always had a very robust engagement on our Palm Coast Connect platform and our, what we call our facts or frequently asked questions, but you will see literally the strength and the power of the platform. There is no way we could have answered 34,000 phone calls in the span of a week, and the next week, another 29,000. So, these are people who are getting on, who are able to get help, who are able to have their questions answered. And again, it continues to grow every day in our capability. That is, we're providing service directly to our residents, but it also is growing in its capacity, which is our ability to continue to be timely, clear, and consistent. I'm proud to say we are one Palm Coast, and in this time of crisis, we are using this. I'm proud to say we are one Palm Coast, and in this time of crisis, we are using this platform to speak with one voice, and it is being, again, very successful. Next slide. So, here's some anecdotal evidence. We've gotten lots of comments and feedback from our residents all along the same line. I wanted, as we see here from Brad West, just wanted to say, great job with the redesign, well organized, much easier to get information that is important and we all need, great visitor experience and user interface. This is, again, these data-driven insights and analytics that become so important and profound in ways we never could have understood. What you're seeing here in the yellow is the number of sewer and pep calls, 550 in this response. And that's unusual in a time when we have a drought. That's unusual in a time when we're not seeing high volumes of, you know, stormwater or other issues. It made us pause and ask, what is going on? And we realized very quickly, as you can see in the bottom picture, people were flushing paper towels and other non-flushable items and clogging up pep pumps. So, we're able to communicate with our residents to not do that and get information out to help us, help our residents stay safe, stay healthy at home and keep their systems working. Also, again, informed us on how we can do a better job in all times of crisis, communicating those essential things that people need to remember and recall to do. This one is staggering. We put on the virtual town hall meetings and again, in an effort to engage with our residents and meet on a daily, you know, meet on a weekly basis, answer pressing questions and just be accessible to our community, which has always been a priority, the accessibility and transparency. Our first virtual town hall meeting was on April 1st, and we had 354 recorded participants. Our next virtual town hall meeting is tomorrow. We have almost doubled that number to 658, and my understanding is it's getting close to 700. Absolutely astounding that, again, it's easy, it's accessible, it's a single source of communication and truth that we're running through Palm Coast Connect and your virtual city hall, and our residents are receiving it and they are using it. Again, an investment very well made in time and in resources. I don't think the city of Palm Coast has ever in its history had a city meeting with 658 participants. This is astounding and very proud of this moment. And again, thank you to the council and the staff. We've worked very hard on this. Next slide, Doug. Again, something we've never done before, which from a management standpoint has made this crisis easier to manage and to understand every day when we come into the office, is we are connecting Palm Coast Connect, as was the vision, across all the departments to analyze and monitor activities, and this enables us, again, data analytics for resource management. This is something most staff has never seen before. This is data that the fire department logs and records. These are specific data sets over the last few weeks related specifically to dispatch for breathing problems, dispatched to someone who is feeling ill. And again, two other categories here of nature on the scene of a breathing problem and a sick scene problem. But what we're able to see for the first time, and all department heads are able to understand now, is this daily analytics looking at how we're expending our resources, what kind of load we're putting our first responders under, and we're going to have a record now to be able to look back, access these dashboards and tie, you know, the case trends that we're seeing so diligently recorded by the Florida Department of Health and our local flagler health department to the metrics at the hospital and now our own data. This helps us become smarter, and I'll say it, and God forbid, in the event of another crisis down the road, it's going to help us understand what we did right, what we could have done better, what integrations could work better. So, again, we're capturing data now that I believe is going to be useful in a post-evaluation and years into the future for us as a community. And another way we're doing this, first of its kind again, Doug, next slide, please, is we have what's called the department attendance dashboard. As you may know in some communications I've sent, the COVID-19 response has forced us to augment and change some of our leave policies. And additionally, we wanted to know as an entire leadership team, how many employees may have been sick on a certain date, using sick leave, using annual leave, calling in for other reasons, taking vacation, maybe they weren't affected. We definitely wanted to know how many employees we have dispatched and working remotely. Again, first time you've ever seen this kind of information because it's the first time we've been able to collect it across multiple departments, break down those information silos, and every manager in the city can understand at a glance what our full human resource potential is and what our full human resource capacity is. So, again, this system is working externally with great success to our residents, but it also continues to evolve and work seamlessly internally to make sure that we are making good decisions and have as firm of a handle on understanding day by day how we continue to manage and move and find a path forward through this event. And I just wanted to bring that update because I think it is so, again, profound and timely that just the extraordinary success, the level of feedback I'm getting from the community on how they feel heard, how they feel connected to their city, how all of our business right now, 100%, again, first time in Palm Coast history, you can do every building planning function remotely. We've made extraordinarily, I think, extraordinary steps that are, again, going to teach us lessons and pay dividends into the future through utilizing the technology platform that we have here. So, again, thank you to the mayor, thank you, city council, and all the department heads for your hard work in helping us manage this.
Thank you. And I think that illustrates the power of data and how we make better decisions, not only on behalf of our residents, but you can on behalf of your departments and their staff. So, I appreciate that. You know, counsel, I would encourage you to get with Tyler, our communications officer, to see how you can share the information for our residents to be able to take advantage of this tool and this resource. Tomorrow, in our town hall, our virtual town hall, we have residents that have already submitted hundreds of questions that we will be able to respond to, and not only respond to right there in the town hall. If we run out of time, we will upload and transcribe all the answers, and they will have those on the page for the residents to see, not only the questions, but the responses. And we're going to keep doing these. So, if you have any ideas or what you want to measure or what your thoughts are, it would be helpful, you know, please let the city manager know. But this has been a great resource for us, and I know the directors feel the same. So, and I forgot to mention a happy birthday to Councilmember Ben Quino. It's a little late. You know, I was expecting some Portuguese bread that you so share on Facebook, but happy birthday.
Thank you.
I know. And thank you again, you know, to our city manager who is leading us 24 hours a day, seven days a week throughout this. So, thank you. Okay. I would ask Councilmember Quino if you can do a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.